No, don't worry about it. I'll tell you.
Side, side, side. Have a go and no deal.
Good evening and welcome to the April 23rd, 2024 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to city council. If the item you should speak to is not on the agenda. We have a three-minute light system. After stating your name and address, you will see a green light. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you'll see a red light and we ask you to take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. The city code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address council. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to speak to council, please review a copy of that ordinance. At that time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Russell Evanson with Wild Church will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Harris will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you. Sir.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, City Council.
Good evening.
What is truth has been masked by every generation and sought for since the beginning of man. Today, as our prayer, we lift up our elected leaders of Newport News, recognizing the weight of their responsibilities and the impact of their decisions that they have on the well-being of the community, the state, and even beyond to our nation. Unless the Lord builds a house, the work of the laborers, the builders, is wasted. Unless the Lord protects the city, guarding it with centuries will do no good. Psalm 127. Grant, Lord, our leaders, the wisdom to discern truth in all the matters that are before them this evening. We ask that you grant them truth to guide every decision for the sake and the betterment of the children, the youth, the families, and the citizens of the city of Newport News. We also ask that they have the courage to implement the decisions which will result in actions affecting the lives of many. Empower them to serve with humility and unity and with a genuine concern for the welfare of all. We ask these things in the name of the one who declared that he was the way, the truth, and the life in whom resides all wisdom. Amen.
Please join me as we recite the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to excuse Councilman Vic from this meeting?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Before we get started with the meeting, I have three presentations this evening. I would like to ask Riverside Health System representatives to come forward to the podium. They need to come around me. We have, we have three of these, so we're gonna, we're gonna do it right. Don't worry, you can. Yeah, it's, it's fine. It's like a horseshoe. So the city of Newport News is proud of its partnership with Riverside Health System. The most recent fact of this partnership is Newport News' distinction as a stroke smart city. This is very timely as next month is National Stroke Awareness Month. Strokes have impacted many of us in this assembly. You or someone you know may have dealt with this, agmet this disease. Through this Stroke Smart City campaign, Newport News will help educate our residents about the signs of a stroke. Every second matters when someone is experiencing a stroke and the city is stepping up to raise awareness, knowing how to recognize a stroke and what actions to take can save lives. On behalf of city council, manager, and nearly 4,000 employees, I would like to read the following proclamation. So we'll have someone hold it. Whoever wants to hold it.
Hey, council, will you come up as well? I'm gonna read it as it comes up.
But I'm just gonna read it as they come up. Whereas stroke is the fifth leading cause of death in Virginia and the United States, as well as the leading cause of long-term disability in the United States, it can happen to anyone at any age. And whereas every forty seconds, someone in the U.S. has a stroke with less than thirty percent of adults knowing the importance of 911 or being aware of the signs and symptoms. Be fast, balance, eyes, face, arm, speech, time. And whereas lifesaving treatments are available for stroke, mostly started within three and four and a half hours. Whereas Virginia was declared a Stroke Smart State in 2021 as a public health initiative to increase public's awareness. Whereas public and private schools in the city of Newport News will be encouraged to make stroke education part of their training for all students, faculty, and families. And whereas all community members, businesses, civic organizations, senior communities will be encouraged to contribute to this stroke education campaign. And whereas our city expresses thanks to the doctors, nurses, paramedics, administrators, staff, and community partners for their efforts on this initiative. One more. And whereas the goal is to reduce deaths and disability due to stroke by educating everyone who lives or works in the city of Newport News about stroke recognition. Now, therefore, I, Philip Jones, Mayor of the city of Newport News, hereby proclaim our city to be known as Newport News, a Stroke Smart City, and thank all those working on behalf of the health of Newport News residents in helping to make our city an even healthier place to live, to learn, to work, and to visit. Thank you so much. Everyone get tight. Everyone get tight for this. Whenever she says go. Pat, is Pat okay? We'll do the phone first. All right. All right, all right. Good? All right, we're good. Thank you so much. Uh, it's yours. Yeah, you gotta get it. Yeah. Council might as well just stay up here. Yeah, you can just stay, Pat. You might as well just stay. Okay, so today it is with great pride and admiration that we gather to celebrate the outstanding achievements of our student athletes from Woodside High School. And we can clap for that. In recent competitions, oh yeah, sorry, pom poms ready. These remarkable individuals have not only showcased their exceptional talent, but also have brought greatness to our city by securing multiple state championship titles. As Mayor of Newport News, it is an honor to acknowledge and commend their dedication, hard work, and remarkable accomplishments. Let us come together to recognize and celebrate these amazing young athletes who have made all of us proud. At this time, at this time, I would like to ask Jordan Anderson and her coaches to come forward. Jordan? Is there a song, Governor? I need a song. So today it is my distinct honor to recognize and celebrate a truly remarkable achievement by one of our own, a shining star of Woodside High School, Jordan Anderson. On February 24th, 2024, Jordan secured the 2024 Virginia High School League All Class 126-Pound Girls Wrestling State Champion, becoming the first ever wrestling state champion in Woodside's history. This momentous accomplishment is a testament to Jordan's unwavering dedication, tireless perseverance, and unyielding spirit. Her relentless pursuit of excellence has not only inspired her fellow students, but has also captured the admiration of our entire community. So we have a proclamation. So whereas the city of Newport News takes great pride in recognizing and celebrating the outstanding achievements of its residents, particularly those who excel in athletics and academics. And whereas it is with great honor and admiration that we acknowledge Woodside High School senior Jordan Anderson, a shining example of dedication, perseverance, and excellence in both sports and education. And whereas Jordan Anderson has demonstrated unparalleled skill and determination in the sport of wrestling, resulting in her amazing accomplishments as the first ever wrestling state champion in Woodside High School program history. And whereas we recognize and commend the guidance and support provided by Jordan's coaches Cameron Mix and Ricardo Flores Jr., whose mentorship has contributed greatly to her success on and off the mat. And whereas Jordan Anderson exemplifies the ideals of leadership as that events by her membership in the National Honor Society, the National Social Studies Honor Societies, that's a lot, and active involvement in the Woodside Student Athlete Leadership Team. And my favorite part, whereas Jordan Anderson maintains an amazing academic record with a GPA of 4.32, underscoring her unwavering commitment to excellence in all facets of her life. Now, therefore, I, Philip Jones, Mayor of the city of Newport News, hereby proclaim that Jordan Anderson will be remembered for her exemplary achievements in athletics, academics, and leadership at Woodside High School. The city of Newport News commends you for becoming the first ever state champion in Woodside High School wrestling history and the 2024 Virginia High School League All Class 126-Pound Girls Wrestling State Champion. At, at this time, we're gonna get a photo. I have the school board, who's also been amazing to come up as well, and we'll do a group photo. So let's, let's center this thing. All right. Okay, let's do it. We're coming this way. Pat, come on. All right, you good?
Good.
Come on, one second, Pat. And we're good. Thank you so much.
No, we gotta get that stuff.
You can lean on the podium. Yeah, just come hang with me. For the next presentation, I would like to ask the Woodside Boys Basketball Team players and coaches to come forward, please. Oh, pom poms. We did play them. Where'd Coach go? So together we gather with immense pride and excitement to honor the incredible back-to-back, back-to-back boys basketball championship team from Woodside High School. Under the guidance of head coach Welsh and assistant coach Jeff Hall, the team achieved a historic victory on March 9th, 2024, securing their fourth Virginia High School League State Championship title with an impressive 53 to 33 win. I even wore my special Newport News shirt, all right, for everyone tonight. As we commemorate this remarkable achievement, let's take a moment to recognize the significance of supporting and celebrating our student athletes. Their unwavering determination and commitment to success serve as inspiration to all of us. It says, "On behalf of the vice mayor," it was added in here. So on behalf of the vice council, city manager, and our nearly 4,000 employees, I would like to read the following proclamation. Whereas the city of Newport News takes immense pride in recognizing and celebrating the outstanding achievements of its high school athletic teams, showcasing the dedication, skill, and teamwork of its coaches and athletes. And whereas the Woodside High School Boys Basketball Team has exemplified excellence in athletics, securing their second back-to-back state title, adding to their previous victories in 20, or sorry, in 2004, 2005, and recently in 2023. And whereas Silas Barksdale has been honored as the Virginia High School League Class 5B Boys High School Player of the Year, demonstrating exceptional talent on and off the court. And whereas head coach Stefan Welsh has been recognized for the second consecutive year as the Virginia High School League Class 5B Basketball Coach of the Year, demonstrating outstanding leadership and guidance to his team both on and off the court. And whereas on March 9th, 2024, the Woodside High School Boys Basketball Team secured the 2024 Virginia High School League Class 5 State Championship with an impressive 53 to 33 victory, showcasing their determination, skill, and resilience. Now, therefore, I, Philip Jones, Mayor of the city of Newport News, hereby proclaim the 2024 Woodside High School Boys Basketball Team be remembered forever for their remarkable athletic achievements, dedication, and sportsmanship. The city of Newport News commends the outstanding athletes of the Woodside High School Boys Basketball Team, as well as the coaches, family, and fans for the school's second back-to-back Virginia High School League Boys Basketball State Title. So let's do, you're gonna do the photo first? Okay, let's do a photo first. So you want us on this side? This side? All right, let's all, let's all shift, council. Let's shift. Three, two, one, we're good. Thank you. One more thing. So now I'm excited to share with you an updated sign created for our city roads. Drumroll, please. Drumroll, please. Let's do it. All right, thank you all. Thank you, everyone who helped us with that. I think it's important to recognize when our students do amazing things, and we have some of the best students here in Newport News. Public hearing, page four. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and direct, I'm sorry, authorizing change of zoning application Zulu dash 2024 dash 0001 for 23 properties totaling 2.08 acres from R8 to R5. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers? Motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sale or condemnation portions of certain parcels of real property located at 773 Crowton Road and 77 Crowton Road for the Huxley Place Drainage Improvement Project. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers? Motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance vacating a portion of an existing drainage and utility easement across property located at 6018 Chestnut Avenue. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Item E4 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute and the city clerk to attest on behalf of the city of Newport News, a comprehensive agreement with HGS LLC pursuant to the Public Private Education Facilities Infrastructure Act of 2002 for stream and wetland restoration projects to enhance Newport News watershed property. City manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following item. Page 87, minutes of the work session of April 9th, 2024. Page 128, minutes of the regular meeting of April 9th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items F1 and F2 all inclusive.
So move.
Second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Other City Council actions, next in our agenda, page 159, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council. Item G1 is a request to receive an open bids for granting a utility easement across city-owned property located at 560 Hampton Road Center Parkway. Virginia Natural Gas is seeking to upgrade its electrical service at its 546 Hampton Road Center Parkway facility from 240 volts to 480 volts. This upgrade requires the installation of a new 15-foot-wide underground utility easement, and I recommend approval.
I will open the bid. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, please accept this $1 bid from Dominion Energy Virginia as a response to advertisement and public notice published in the legal section of the Daily Press. Page 179, item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to receive an open bids for granting a utility easement across city-owned property located at 61026 Street for new electrical service needed to power the future office and retail space at 2510 Jefferson Avenue currently being redeveloped in connection with the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. I recommend approval.
I will open the bid. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, please accept this $1 bid from Dominion Energy Virginia as a response to the advertisement, public notice published in the legal section of the Daily Press. Page 181, item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to approve the formation of GO Senior Living LLC by Newport News Redevelopment Housing Authority for the benefit of Great Oaks Apartments. The Newport News Redevelopment Housing Authority has formed single-purpose entities in the past primarily for programs such as the HUD Rental Assistance Demonstration Program or low-income housing tax credit applications. However, the establishment of GO Senior Living LLC is now necessary to replace an investor member within Great Oaks Apartments LLC. This investor fulfilled the 15-year compliance period and seeks to withdraw from the LLC. To maintain project operations, the successor member is required. GO Senior Living LLC was established for this purpose during a Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board meeting on February 20th, 2024, with Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority retaining full ownership. The Newport News Redevelopment and Housing Authority Board recommends City Council approval consistent with past requests approved by the City Council. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ray McSuttle and Ms. Karen Wild, questions only.
Questions only, is there questions from City Council at this time? Hearing none, motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Page 187, item G4, Mr. Manager.
G4 is a request to approve an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to execute any and all documents necessary for the voluntary acquisition of property located at 375 Poplar Avenue through the city's Flood Assistance Program. The property is in an area of frequent repetitive flooding as it is located within the 100-year floodplain. Purchase of the property will ensure the floodplain's storage is preserved and improve infiltration of floodwaters and stormwater runoff. I recommend approval.
Are there any speaker?
No, sir.
Motion to adopt an ordinance.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury. Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Page 191, item G5, Mr. Manager.
G5 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate a standard project administration agreement between the City of Newport News and the Virginia Department of Transportation for two state-of-good repair milling, paving, and concrete repair projects. Warwick Boulevard SGR repaving projects from 13193 Warwick Boulevard to 14260 Warwick Boulevard. City Council has previously approved this resolution, however, VDOT is requiring the city to add language in the resolution that provides assurance of its commitment to local funding and meeting its financial obligations for the project. This language will be required for all future VDOT state and federally funded projects. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury. Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Appropriations, page 206, item H, Mr. Manager.
We have three appropriations this evening. The first appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $192,000 from the Virginia Marine Resources Commission Abandon or Derelict Vessel Grant Program for removal and disposal of abandoned or derelict vehicles moored at Minchville Marina. The grant funding provided by the Virginia Marine Resources Commission will enable the removal of abandoned vessels, thereby restoring the functionality and accessibility of the 200 feet of city-owned public mooring located at 522 Minchville Road South. This enhances the public mooring for this important Virginia oyster industry in Deep Creek Harbor and for transient mooring for vessels needed, needing access to purchase groceries and other supplies before continuing on their journey. No matches required. The second appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1 million of fiscal year 2024 Virginia Department of Transportation Highway Safety Improvement Program grant program funds for the Jefferson Avenue at Pavilion Place New Traffic Signal Project and the Rock Landing Drive at Omni Boulevard New Traffic Signal and Left Turn Lanes Project. Similarly, the city also secured $1,095,000 in HSIP grant funds for the Rock Landing Drive at Omni Boulevard New Traffic Signal and Left Turn Lanes Project, also executing a project agreement with VDOT in November of 2019. VDOT has also allocated an additional $750,000 of HSIP funds to the Jefferson Avenue at Pavilion Place New Traffic Signal Project, as well as an additional $250,000 of funds to the Rock Landing Drive at Omni Boulevard New Traffic Signal and Left Turn Lanes Project. Once appropriated, these projects will commence construction. The HSIP grant is 90% federal, 10% state, and 0% locally funded. The third and final appropriation this evening is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $33,178,000 from the fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2024 bond authorizations, public buildings, and community development categories for the design and construction of the Virgil L. Grissom Library New Building Project. The proposed state-of-the-art two-story library spans 51,450 square feet and will offer meeting spaces, offer accommodations, and scalable technology. Potential features include a drive-up window, auditorium, expanded children's area, study rooms, community meeting space, and an art gallery. Additional funds for construction will be phased in as part of an upcoming capital improvement plan, with final project funding to be appropriated at a later date. I recommend approval of all three appropriations this evening.
Are there any speakers?
Request for the floor, Mayor Jones.
Yep.
Just want to say thank you, Council. I'm speaking to Grissom Library. I truly believe that this is going to be a catalyst for more development uptown, and I'm looking forward to this coming to fruition. So again, just want to say thank you.
Motion to approve item H1 through H3, all inclusive.
Second.
Moved and seconded, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Motion carries 6-0.
Citizen comments, item I, citizen comments on matters, Dominion Council. Aaron Easter.
Yeah, you're, I think, you're good, you can start. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Jones and Members of City Council. My name is Aaron, I'm a leader with the Hampton Newport News Chapter of Virginia Organizing. I'm here to speak on the issue of homelessness and affordable housing in Newport News and the Peninsula. But there's no need for me to speak on how these issues are impacting everyday citizens in Newport News as well as those who are unhoused. You have spoken on this issue time and time again at multiple of these City Council meetings. We have also tried to establish a dialogue on common sense solutions to the rising cost of housing and the increase in the unhoused in the region. You are less than a month away from the Newport News City budget being released and voted upon by this body, and as you've stated time and time again at previous council meetings and elsewhere, this body must include in next year's fiscal budget the resources necessary for a standalone homeless shelter so that Newport News and Hampton are not the only cities on the peninsula without one. Dr. King once stated that budgets are moral documents. Budgets paint a clear picture of what our elected officials value, what they consider to be a priority, and the concrete actions they are willing to take. You all have an opportunity now to align your values with the needs of our most vulnerable citizens. So now, once again, we are calling for the mayor and each member of the City Council to meet with the community on this matter. We will be here after the meeting to set up dates and times to meet with you all. Please make this a priority. People and families are one paycheck away from homelessness. If this is not your priority, it really needs to be. Housing is a human right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Ray Karkov.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm Carol Ray Karkov. I live at 197 Revelle Drive, Newport News, Virginia, 23608. I live in this community. I attend this community center, Denby Community Center, and have since the time it was first constructed. When it was first put on the budget, we had a swimming pool on the budget. It's been on the budget three times. I ask that you sincerely put it on the budget to be built here, or if there is another facility nearby that our community residents can enjoy that area. It's good for all ages, it's good for health in all ways, but three times is quite a bit. I propose that you vote for this and that we see some good, clean water. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is new business, City Manager.
None, sir.
City Attorney.
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk.
None, sir.
Councilman Harris.
And good evening to everyone, and thank you for joining us on tonight as we came up to the North District to have our meeting, which we are, well, I'm excited about that I don't have such a long drive home once we are released tonight, so thank you for attending with us. Couple things I wanted to share, this Sunday, April 28th, starting at 11 o'clock right outside this building, we're going to have our Community Day partnering with the Tri-City Youth Foundation in which we're going to be near, at the Bethia Family Foundation Basketball Court. We'll have vendors, food, youth resources, hopefully share some of the information that we shared earlier today in our work session about some of the opportunities for the summertime. So we ask that you bring your children on out to celebrate, have a good time, it'll be face painting for the kids and adults if you would like to do that as well. And we're also in conjunction with a food drive in which we're still collecting items throughout the course of this month, and it'll all culminate on that day. We're looking to fill a truck. We have quite a few items so far. We're collecting peanut butter, jelly, spaghetti sauce, tuna and water, and canned corn. But anything else that you would like to donate, we're still collecting those as we speak throughout the course of the week, and it'll all culminate on this day for the Community Day Food Drive. So we hope to see you out, and also I would like to acknowledge another young person in our community that's doing great things. Ms. Morgan Kent is a fifth grader. She's a member of the Tri-City Program, and she runs track with the Hampton Roads Hurricanes, and she's doing a phenomenal job in school and in the community. She loves spending time crocheting and dancing, and she is a stellar student as she just received straight A's on her honor roll, straight A honor roll, that she just received a report card, and also a member of Girl Scouts Student Advisory Team at her school, Ivy Baptist Church's 116 Youth Ministry, and she was recognized recently as the most outstanding student for her attitude and contributions to her school. So we want to acknowledge Ms. Morgan Kent in our community for doing great things as a young lady, and we continue to see her grow and develop into a productive citizen here in the City of Newport News. And congratulations again to the students that were recognized for Woodside, the basketball team, and Ms. Jordan for the state championships that they brought back to our city. And what was the greatest thing to hear was about the GPA over 4.0 that we were celebrating on tonight, meaning that they're shining not just on their athletic arena but in the academic arena, and that's what we love to see. So thank you for everyone once again, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilman Long.
Also a pleasure to see everyone able to come out to the City Council. Look forward to an opportunity for the Central District when we have that event, get the Central District people out. I just want to just remind everyone that today is Give 757 Local, you got four more hours left. Go on there and see, there are a lot of different organizations that you can contribute to and donate your dollars towards. If you get an opportunity to go out there and look at it, Give 757 Local. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Yes, it is always a pleasure to come to this part of the city. I'm delighted our new mayor has decided that we are going to share the goodies with downtown, and if we need, if we have to have some way of getting our downtown people up here, I suggest a school bus and just get them up here, but it's great to be here. I always love to come because you all are so vocal in this part of the city, and we have so many speakers, and we learn so much because our students teach us, teach us things, and so do our people that, that we serve, which is our community here. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here. I hope we'll be back soon. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Ely.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out today. Once again, thank our budget department again for passing that amazing budget, and thank our first responders for all the hard work that you do. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Vice.
Yes, same sentiments, want to thank everyone for coming out, want to thank our first responders for coming out tonight. As Councilman Harris stated, I mean, to only have to drive five minutes to a council meeting, I think is a luxury that we are so fortunate to have right now. Maybe we should do some more meetings uptown, but nevertheless, again, thank you for moving forward with the Grissom Library. I truly believe that'll serve as a catalyst for more development in this area. And of course, major shout-outs to Woodside, not just the basketball team, but you heard all the amazing things that the young lady has done, you know, we have some phenomenal high schools here in the city. Sometimes my bias shows because I went to Woodside, but nevertheless, I bleed purple and teal, so just want to say congratulations to them, and that is all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will wrap up, I'm losing my voice, and I have a big speech tomorrow, so adjourned.